Okay, sound check. Are we okay? Is, okay, we're checking. Pretty good. Okay, thank you. All right. So I want to start the meeting staff one last time. We're good to go. Okay, very good. Good evening. Welcome to the town of Emmitsburg. November first, twenty twenty-one town meeting. At this time, I will ask everyone to please either silence or turn off their cell phones. I'm going to make an addendum here. We have two commissioners who are missing. We will be hearing from them via Zoom. The mayor has asked if he can text to make sure that he can be heard. So I am keeping my phone out for the singular purpose of getting texts from the mayor saying that he wants to speak. He will be speaking as I understand it via Zoom. And he just wanted to make sure he had that option to weigh in during the meeting. So out of respect to the mayor's request, I will allow that. So my phone will be out, but if I look at it, it will be to respond to the mayor to allow home access to the meeting. It is a brave new world. All right, moving from there, I'll ask everyone to please stand for the pledge.
A pledge leading to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. So future meetings at this time, we have listed the town tree lighting. If you can imagine yesterday was Halloween and we're talking about Christmas. That will occur on Monday, December sixth, twenty twenty-one at six P M. At the community center. The Parks and Recreation Committee will meet on Tuesday, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty P M. That will occur here in the town office. The next town council meeting will occur on Tuesday, December seventh, twenty twenty-one at seven thirty P M. Again, here in the town office and it will be accessible in person and via Zoom. So before we move forward, I want to discuss our agenda items. This evening, we have a modified schedule. Staff Ms. Willetts, I'm going to ask you to correct me if I misspeak about our agenda items because of the modifications. Okay, so item one, we do not have a representative from Senator Huff's office. We will hear from a vendor. Item two has been dropped from the agenda. And is that being postponed?
Yes, that should be postponed. Probably you'll see it maybe in January.
Thank you. Okay. Item three, we will see a straightforward item. Item number four, we will hear. Item number five, we will hear some information. And item six, we are dropping from the agenda. Is that correct?
Correct.
Item six is being dropped. Items set item seven, we will hear is a straightforward item. Item eight and item nine, we will hear information. There will be a modification. It states that we will be setting sale prices for two properties owned by the town. That part of these agenda items will not occur. So Ms. Willetts, I think I'm on the right page.
Yes, that's correct.
Terrific. Mr. President, I have a question to me over here.
Yes.
Regarding number one, is delegate Pippi attending this evening?
I'm I'm not aware of the delegate attending.
He confirmed. Oh, he just walked in.
Okay, well, delegate Pippi, it looks like.
Well, that answered my question.
Okay, very good. Good evening. All right. So we will be hearing from the delicate regarding a delegate from delegate Pippi for in relationship to the MS four item. Okay, so now we turn to our meeting items. So I'm going back to item number four. My assumption is everyone has had the opportunity to review the minutes from October fourth, twenty twenty-one. Are there any modifications anybody would like to add or here?
I just had two small modifications, Mr. President.
Yes, sir.
On page number four of our agenda packet under public comments, it was just a spelling of some last names.
Okay.
Mister Sloan.
One.
There's an is one and yeah.
Okay.
And and Mister Kevin Hagan as opposed to Hogan.
Very good.
Correct.
That's all I had.
That's what we had.
Thank you.
Anybody else regarding Zoom from the Zoom community from the commission? No comments. Okay. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as provided from the October fourth, twenty twenty-one meeting?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the October fourth meeting as modified.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion?
I'll second it.
Motions have been made by Commissioner Ritz, seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. And Commissioner Burns, are you with us yet? Not yet. We know that Commissioner Burns is on route to the meeting. You know, Commissioner Davis is zooming in for this evening, as is the mayor. Okay, we now turn to the deputy for the police report. Good evening, deputy. Thanks for being here.
Yes, sir. Monthly report for October. Use for annual days. We had a police one online training, both me and Ben. Did a town meeting last month, trick or treating and parade went really well. We had our fall qualifications, both of us. We had zero fleet issues. We handled three hundred ninety-one calls for service. We're six arrests, hundred thirty-four directed patrols. Twelve traffic stops were eighty and wind cars completed were six. The armed robbery of the liquor store west end of town. We identified a suspect. Search warrant was served. Case is still pending. We had a natural death in town. We had an arrest for domestic assault for first and second degree. We had one overdose, not cooperative. White House had four court days. We did a bunch of walks and talks around in school, school checks. And then the last thing I like to bring up is we're continuing to have problems with Mount student parties, the same student athletes. I spoke with my sergeant today. He's going to meet with the mount this week and have a closed door conversation with the people to try to get this rectified. I shut down a bunch of parties Friday and Saturday. We just can't have students carrying open alcohol containers and drinking in public and acting a fool. And it was addressed Friday and Saturday. We had no problem Sunday. But I I made it aware for my sergeant to take it up to the next level because it has to stop. As much as we love the Mount students and we want them here, they have to have cordial behavior in town and the same houses continue to be the problem. So we're going to fix it for good this time.
Great, thank you. How you doing your qualifications?
We all shoot.
Perfect. As would be expected. Thank you, sir. Okay.
No questions for the deputy while we still have him in the room. No, pretty good. We're good. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right.
All hundreds indeed. Okay, we move forward. We turn now to the town manager.
Good evening. This is the town manager's report for September of twenty twenty-one. I'll highlight some of the key areas in my report related to streets. Staff repainted repainted some yellow curves and put the banners and flags up for fallen firefighters. They also trimmed weed ate and we killed sidewalks, curbs and tree wells on East and West Main Street. Related to parks, we had a contractor complete the Memorial Park swing set project, which included installing a new swing set, relocating the swing set and rock wall from community park. Staff also put in mulch and repaired the border boards at Emmett Gardens Park that were damaged from the flooding from the tropical storm. We had a contractor install a new hot water heater in the community park bathroom. And staff also repaired a cleanup cap to the concession stand along Memorial Park Road. Related to water, Rainbow Lake is currently at the spillway level of sixteen point six feet. We're still having difficulties with the lake water, but we're making progress at the end of the month. The wells are still being primarily run with the lake being secondary. Fortunately, with the plentiful rainfall, the wells have all recovered. We did run all five lake or five wells in the month of September. You'll see the well depths. They've definitely recovered since August. In September, we produced an average of two hundred forty-five thousand, seven hundred and seventy-seven gallons per day and consumed an average of two hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two. The amount of backwash water in the month of September was roughly fourteen point two percent. As you can see, we got eighty-five percent of our water in September from our wells. We purchased four hundred and sixteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty gallons of water from the mount. For wastewater, we treated an average of eight hundred and eighty-nine thousand gallons per day. We consume two hundred and thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two gallons per day, which means seventy-four percent of the wastewater in September was wild water. This was due largely to the tropical storm Ida and then the significant rain event just weeks later. The pump station can no longer keep up with those high flows. Staff had been transferring from the lagoons back through the plant to lower the levels from the heavy rains. We continue to remove pump rags and grease out of the pump station. Unfortunately, staff pulled out five garbage bags by hand. However, it was not enough and we had to have a contractor come in and they're they're scheduled to come back in. I have November first, but they're coming back actually tomorrow to complete the clean out. They need to physically remove everything that can't be removed by the pumping. On a side note, I received a flyer or postcard flyer today of a class action lawsuit from a specific company. And a lot of eligible sewage systems are allowed to join in and they are going against some rag makers. I'm going to send that to our town attorney tomorrow. We had two spills of untreated sewage in the month of September. M D E and the Frederick County Health Department were notified. We did exceed the design capacity nine times in the month of September, and that was all related to the heavy rains from the tropical storm. We received twelve point one inches of precipitation in the month of September. So we currently had at the end of September surplus to six point four nine inches. Trash pickup will remain Mondays in the month of November. Below are just some of the meetings I attended. Some noteworthy items. Staff worked very hard during the tropical storm and then the preceding rain events. They set up high water and rose road clothes signs during rain events. They also responded to complaints throughout the town. We removed the old picnic table and installed a new one up at Rainbow Lake. All staff attended a mandatory MS four yearly training. And unfortunately, the recycle pump at the Creamery Pump Station is shot and we've got a new pump scheduled to be installed this month. And that's my report for no September.
Thank you. Are there any questions for the town manager regarding the report?
Yes, Mr. President, I just had a few both. Two of these are under noteworthy. I'll make it easy. It's a so page eleven of the agenda packet. One of them is a follow up and it's my fault. I never did get back to you. Unfortunately, it was a night that you were absent due to illness. And it's that first bulleted item regarding the Hampton Valley Road. Could we get a list of the properties that we own here in town that we rent?
That is the only one.
That's the only.
Actually, I take that back. There's one.
On our agenda tonight.
Crystal Fountain. We have one other property on Crystal Fountain Run that is the same renters have been there for at least ten years.
Okay.
So it's these are the only two properties that we currently rent outside of three Christ Community Church.
Okay. And then the last bullet item, I what is C R P S?
That's the Creamery Road Pump Station. Sorry.
I'll make note of that. And then I didn't write it down. So that's all I have then. I had a third that I can't think of it. So you're off the hook.
Okay.
Mr. Sweeney, yes, sir.
You you said there was trash bags pulled out?
No, they that no, they pulled five garbage bags full of rags. Five full black size garbage bags.
Four.
I have pictures.
Wipes.
Wipes, rags, Clorox wipes. Everything.
Is there any indication of the use of those? Like, is it? Like? Like, you know, childcare wipes, like diaper changing, or is it a commercial? Is it like grease that's on these? Or do we have any?
Well, there's also a lot of grease, but the lot of the rags are flushable wipes. But they're also the due to COVID, what became very popular, those Clorox wipes. And I should say Clorox, but it's any brand of wipes and anything that can be used as a rag.
Okay, so I'm sorry. So are you saying the quantity that we removed filled two trash bags?
Five.
Five.
Yes, the quantity, the quantity filled five garbage bags.
Understood. Sorry. That's an extreme amount. Okay.
Is there any way we can get something with the water bills to tell the people, you know, the sewer is going to back up if not if the plant shuts down because of the rags?
We have. It's included in your newsletter quarterly. We actually ran it quarterly one time with pictures, but
we put something.
But it's unfortunately, it's nationwide. I think I believe that's why you're seeing the class action lawsuit. And I'll find out more about that hopefully this week.
Can we post it on a ninety-nine too, maybe?
I I believe it's already there. I mean, we've yeah, we've posted on on Facebook. We put it on the website and email newsletter.
Right.
And then the quarterly newsletter. All we can do is keep putting the word out. I actually think it's been on some local news channels also. And a middle town had a big problem where it really messed up their pump station because they were flushing like thicker rags.
Sure.
So we're not alone in this.
Any other questions, Mr. Sweeney? Okay. Commissioner Davis, Commissioner Burns, any questions for the town for the town manager regarding the report?
Oh, I'm good. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, sir. A couple of quick things. The staff work on the the weed eating on Main Street and the public areas. It looked excellent. I know we've had a lot more people in the town like as tourism arises. It's great that our entryways are clean like this. It's been noticed. Typically, at this point in time, we ask that the community park restroom is left open until after the Thanksgiving Day Turkey Trot. I have not had the opportunity to talk to Commissioner Burns to see if he and I are going to be managing it this year. I don't know if town staff has heard from any other party at this time.
We have not. We talked today. We're going to keep the community park bathroom open with heaters through the month of November.
Great.
However, Memorial Park, because they are callers calling for freeze, lower temperatures will be winterized this week.
Right. There's a freeze warning for tonight.
Right.
Okay. All right. That was one item and let's see the other piece. I'm sorry. Oh, just a sort of a follow up. During the tropical storm Ida event, I actually got to talk to Dan Fissell briefly at the Creamery Road Pumping Station, which is the only reason I recognized it and C R P S. Yes. And at that time, he was talking about nursing that pump. And I guess my question is, we're outright replacing the pump or is that something we rebuild?
Yeah, it it they nursed it and it has since
just done.
Stopped. So we don't have, because the construction for the pump station, you know, we're not going to see that for a year before it's fully functional. At least we can't run on just once. We have to replace it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions from afar from commissioners?
I you go ahead. The little baseball's finished. So if they want to go ahead and winterize the the concession stand, then go ahead and do that.
Okay.
I have stuff in it to get out, but they can go ahead.
Okay. The porta potts will remain in both parks through November and then they'll be removed also.
Okay. Let's see. Let's see. The parking enforcement report. Do we hear anything from that tonight or move on? Okay, very good. In December, we'll talk about assigning the parking times, the free parking times and the fundraising.
Yes, I have that on the agenda for December.
Okay, great. And we now turn to the town planners report. Mr. Golden, thank you, sir.
Yeah, sure. Hello, everybody. This is September, two thousand twenty-one planners report. Under Board of Appeals, we did have an appeals hearing for three twenty-two South Seaton Avenue, one thirty-five Chesapeake Avenue. So I processed those staff memos. Under grants, community legacy, I submitted fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one grant quarterly reports. And just a friendly reminder to residents that we are now accepting fiscal year two thousand twenty-two grant applications until December thirty-first. So please reach out to me for more questions. Under Chesapeake Bay Trust, we're still working on the Silo Hill Stormwater Management Basin retrofit design and permitting project that we just submitted that to Frederick County today for approvals for the retrofit under community development block grant. I conducted seven construction inspections, reviewed and processed weeks five through nine payrolls. Completed the semi annual report process payment number two, which included field measurements of twenty-four ramps, processed the grant reimbursement request. Attended a virtual progress meeting, attended or conducted four employee payroll interviews as required for the grant, processed state permit for ramp number thirty-three. And as of September, we had twenty-nine of one thirty ramps done. However, everyone knows it's more as we had our public hearing last month. MS four tree planning project, I issued a press release on the grant and partnership, which we'll talk briefly about tonight. Worked on the current year of MS four permit under our storm water utility feasibility study. I work with the attorney and preparing our contract and the mayor in recommending work group members. I attended a conference call on the ninth with the manager and M D E representatives about the MS four permit. Prepared and attended the annual staff MS four training on the twenty-first. Under new business and development updates. I won't read through these, but if there's any questions from commissioners, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Under permits and zoning process five zoning permit applications, eight backflow preventer permit applications, one street closure permit. I mailed eight high hazard backflow permit renewal reminder letters and responded to various incident reports. Planning Commission, various project management under the Creamery Road Pump Station, reviewed, received and processed, prepared a staff memo for the improvement plat and the addition plat. Irish Town Road oversalk construction and processed extended street closure permit under Village Liquors and Plaza Inn, received review and created staff memo for the site plan improvement plan. I also reviewed their traffic analysis and reviewed and provided comments on their corrected site plan. Rudders processed deeds of easements to these events. Ripley's Creamery received, review and approved the following for final signatures, the site plan, landscape plan and lighting plan. I attended a planning commission meeting and also a conference call on the twentieth with Federal Stone Engineer and miscellaneous forestry stand ten project management. They should be starting in the next month. And that is my report, Mr. President.
Perfect. Any questions for the town planner this time, Mr. Ritz?
I do. Mister Golden, I'm going to take you up on your offer under number five.
Sure.
Page fourteen. Just the McNair properties currently no longer for sale. Is that just a temporary thing? Or do we know that maybe that's not we're not pursuing potential annexation in the future?
I did not speak with the McNair family, so I'm unsure if their contract just expired and
Okay.
So I can try to reach out to them to figure out more for next month.
That'd be good. Thanks. And then the Brookfield ten unit cul-de-sac, is that something in addition to the current Brookfield development?
It is. Okay, so they own a parcel. Mister Demet owns a parcel near the road. Right behind the convenience store. And it's currently zone neighborhood commercial. So he would need to come before the mayor and board commissioners in order to do a zoning map amendment first. And then if you approve that, then he'll proceed forward.
So it's right before the stormwater management area.
That's correct.
Okay, yep. Interesting. All right, thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, I do have to on the grants for the legacy grant. Someone asked me if if a handicap ramp, you know, would be put on their house. Would that be covered underneath the grant? I didn't know what to tell him, so.
No, it wouldn't. When I first was was hired here, I know the Palms tried to put in ADA ramp and the state denied it. The Maryland Historical Trust, so I'm going to say no to that.
That's all I have. I forgot what the other one was. It just went right on my head.
Okay, Commissioner Sweeney, I missed that. What was the question? Who who was?
Handicap ramps of the BFW one.
VFW, okay.
And a residential unit, a house on Main Street, wanted to put one in for their paint for their parents or whatever they use. And they wanted to know if it was covered under grant and I told them I would ask, but
Got it.
And then also told them to call you when.
Thank you.
Mr. Golden, do you know how long ago that request was made regarding the ramps for the through the grant program?
This was two thousand eighteen.
Would you be willing to check again, please?
Of course.
That's been modified.
Absolutely.
And the most current information might be the same, but if not, this might be a good opportunity for some folks who have a need. Following up on one other item, and I'm playing devil's advocate on this one regarding the Brookfield cul-de-sac amendment that's being sought. Okay, so in this process, could you share for the public? When public input related to this can be heard, which meetings will folks from the public have the chance to weigh in saying, yes, I like it or no, I don't. We've already had folks weigh in 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 our forum, but just in process.
Sure. So there's going to be, I guess, three public comment periods. So the first is when we originally bring it to the board, when Mister Demet submits it, we will bring it forth to you guys within thirty days. And then so they have opportunity to comment there. If the board decides to forward it onto the planning commission for their mandatory review, they'll have an opportunity to provide comments there. And then also, if it makes it to that point, there's going to be a public hearing. So they'll also have comments there. So I would recommend any point in that time.
Okay, so three opportunities in the process and a fourth opportunity in the final meeting or is the third opportunity the final meeting?
That's correct. There's going to be the final vote then.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Any other questions for the town planner, Mister Davis, yourself?
Well, I'm good.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, good evening, sir. It is seven fifty-eight and Mister Burns has joined us. Good evening, Mister Burns. Yes, okay. Joining us in person. Sorry, we'll clarify. Moving forward. Okay. Mister Burns, any questions for Mister Golden related to the town planners report? Okay, thank you. Okay, therefore, we move forward at this time. We go to our next item. Commissioner comments, Commissioner Ritz.
Sure, thank you. The commissioners all received an email from a Mister Jason Vaughn regarding the potential of a second water meter at residences with in-ground irrigation. I was hoping that at the end of this meeting, I was hoping to add an agenda item for next month, at least for discussion. Just to talk about the logistics of that. And if we do proceed, I thought it'd be a good time to get that in place before the spring.
Great. Okay. And we'll check with staff when we hear their requests for the agenda, but if not December, would January be sufficient?
I think that would be great.
Spring. Okay, terrific.
Thought I try early, you know.
Great, sure. Absolutely.
Then two things, just follow up kind of. The other day I was in Biglerville, Pennsylvania, and along their main street, they have these really nice banners showcasing vets from the area. And it reminded me of what Mister Dale Shields talked about a few months ago. So just following up with that, I can't remember.
They're working on it.
Okay.
I I received money from I'm keeping all the donations that come in.
Perfect. Thank you.
The sons, the sons is keeping the donation. And they're still waiting on the their forty-five dollars for banner. That's how much a banner costs. Put your family number one.
Okay.
So I can I'll mention that it's forty-five dollars. If anybody wants to purchase a banner, the donations is sent to the Sons of the Legion. American Legion Post one twenty-one in town. We are holding it in the community fund account that I use for the fishing derby and stuff.
Okay.
And family members can can purchase some outright and give the information in the picture, which will be sent to where they make the banners. The mayor's wife, Libby and Dale Schultz is working on that.
Great.
And and that's about all I can tell you because I don't know anything else.
Do we have anything on our website?
I don't think so. I think I was never really given any information on it.
Okay.
Think they've been working on it. And I know somebody, I think you talked to Commissioner Sweeney, you spoke with Jimmy Click.
Yeah.
About it.
Jimmy last night and and because some places have more than one banner.
Right.
And 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 Mister Quick told Mister Shields that probably our poles are too low for more than one banner.
Correct. Yeah, we're not equipped to do two banners on a pole.
Plus, he will put them up and take them down because we have other events that goes on. So they wouldn't be able to stay up all the time. They would be put up and taken down.
Right. Neither. I mean, if there is literature that they want us to put on our website, we certainly can, but I haven't. I don't believe I've been.
They're still working.
That's what I was on my understanding.
Yeah, the mayor's wife and and Dale Schultz are working on the the banners and if they I don't have any other information other than they give me the money already. I took eight checks in for donations. And I'm keeping it for the banners when they get ready to purchase them.
So that was number two. I just say, yeah, it looked great. And it just made me think of that. So I would. Number three, and unfortunately, the mayor's, well, he's sort of with us. Number three, and unfortunately the mayor's, well, he's sort of with us, I, I think he's in on Zooms, this was a, a follow-up question for him. Last month, we had, uh, Ms. Sabrina Paxton Daly, um, an inquiry on the, on her, her bees. And the ordinance that was recently passed, and I know the mayor was going to be reaching out to her, I just wanted to. Get some follow-up on that, if there has been any progress, or maybe Mr. Golden knows something.
I'm here.
Oh, there he is.
Good evening, uh, yeah, I've been talking to her, we were trying to get, uh, a weather day, uh, this weather change, you permit me to come out and visit. Visit there, uh, it, it, her four day with her schedule and things like that, we didn't get that far. We, we do have certain things built into our, our ordinance we just passed that, uh. Uh, protect the town, you know, with education needs, uh, uh. For new people, but she's had a hive, an active hive there for many years. And, uh, I've talked to neighbors who live two houses now, they didn't know she had a hive and, and, you know, we. It's, it's kind of, it was kind of an unusual, uh. Situation, you know, as we know, we have, we have some chickens, a roosters here in town and. And we're gonna probably have to make some acquiescence, maybe. Uh, if they meet every, all the other criteria with the county of the state and the distance seed and. Protocol pay, parallel fee, you know, that, so we're gonna work with that, she's a very active person in her community with the. Hoovers Association, excuse me, and, uh, we wanna try to do everything we can to, uh, cover the air. You know, the, uh, bees are really important, yeah, uh, they can, you know, bring fear in the hearts of many, but, uh. What they do is, uh, uh, is vital to an agricultural community like ours, you know, that. All, all, all being said, Joe, uh, Chris, Joe, uh, I have not been able to see it, really talked about three or four times.
Okay. Well, no, thanks, I appreciate the update, I was just checking in and I can hear you loud and clear, sure we all can, I, I can actually hear you better. When you're on Zoom than you're in the room.
All right, all, all right, I'll stay here, okay.
So, um, that's, that's all I had, thank you.
Commissioner Sweeney will turn to you.
Mayor, um, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you answer your wife and Dale Shield to, to give some kind of update on the next meeting on the banners?
I will, I, I, I will do that, uh.
And provide the town office with some information in case they have any inquiries.
Sure will, sure will.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, will do.
Mr. Sweeney will turn to you for commissioner comments.
Um, I just have one, I want to thank everybody for their help, uh, the, the police department, the, uh. Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, all the organizations to help with Halloween, uh, we had Halloween yesterday in town. We had a parade and everything and it all went really well, um, it was a community effort was pulled together and included the town staff and. And, and Masons and Legion and the Knights of Columbus and, and the Lions Club, um, it, it wasn't just one. One group, it was a community event, which we're gonna try to have all the time. So it went really well and I appreciate my helps and we wanna continue to have. Um, more events like this in the future, our next community event will be Christmas for the town. And that will be on the second Saturday in December, which I don't know what today is. And it will be, um, at the ambulance activities building and that will be Mr. Mister Santa Claus and, and activities to do. From ten o'clock to one at the activities building and that's, um, a free event for the town, for the whole town too.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Burns.
Yes, sir, thank you, uh, echo what Commissioner Sweeney said about Halloween, it was great to see everybody out on Main Street, uh, all the kids out. Even the parents were dressed up, it was a great event, uh, the parade was awesome. Everybody standing around the square cheering all the kids and adults coming through was, uh, was a great event, having prizes for the kids is, uh. Is something that's awesome, I think the kids get really excited about that, I know one little girl who won, she was in shock and was so excited that she ran up there and. Uh, received her prize, um, and then the next quote, statement slash question, I guess, would be. Uh, I did some exploring with my son and father-in-law this past weekend, uh, between Bunker Hill and Silo Hill, which is flat run. And there's some nice trails and stuff back there, but what we noticed was, there's several trees that have fallen down across the flat. And you can see where the water's starting to dam up and things of that nature, is that something that's town responsibility, or is that a larger? Issue, uh, is that state? So is this something we can contact the state? Because you can see where the water's starting to dam up now, so there's two prob- two, uh, you know, potential problems is. If we get a huge rainfall again, is that gonna cause that flooding back up to the bridge again, and then God forbid that dam breaks through. It's gonna rush everything down into town and things of that nature, so I don't know if we wanna reach out to state and see if they can bring somebody in to. Cut down some of the trees that have fallen and clean out some of their, I know we've discussed in the past about dredging. And they've obviously, you know, put a hold on that for different reasons, but something of this nature can cause some serious issues, uh, going forward, so. I just wanted to throw that out there for you guys.
You said bunker hill.
So it's right below bunker hill, so I don't know, I don't know if anybody's ever been back there, but bunker hill comes up on the hill and then basically cliff straight down onto. The flat, uh, several trees have fallen almost all together right there and they're starting to back everything up there. Um, and then it's, it, it's, it looks like it's kind of weakened the water flow down into town, but it's, it's right. Probably about two hundred yards from the bridge on North Seaton Avenue there.
Okay, I'll, I have a good content, state.
I believe our sewer lines run down through.
There are several sewer lines down there, I talked to, uh, Mr. Click about that as well, because I know.
Might be somewhere that some of the waters getting in that when it backs up.
Yeah, I think there's, this could be a much larger issue that we might be able to alleviate some of the problems there, I know we saw two sewer caps there for sure. And I think there's a third one further down, um, but it's something that, uh, if state can get out there and start taking care of that, that'd be awesome. That's all.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Davis, we turn to you for commissioner comments.
Well, just one thing, I'd like to thank staff for the, uh, business slash development update, that's very, very helpful. To be able to answer questions for, uh, for citizens when they're asking us, uh, the status of things, so thank you very much for that.
Great, thank you, sir. Um, I'll jump in. Okay, uh, for commissioner comments for myself, on October twenty-third, USA Cycling hosted its national championship for the Mountain Making Marathon. Emmitsburg, we were represented at a table at the reception afterwards in downtown Frederick. The event was attended by about six hundred people, uh, they came from all over the country, including New Hampshire, Utah, Wisconsin, New Mexico. Colorado, Alabama, Pennsylvania, New York, and they made sure every one of them walked out of there with an Emmitsburg Trail sticker. And I write up about the town of Emmitsburg and we got some very positive feedback about that. Uh, USA Cycling's Executive Director of National Events, her name is Tara McCarthy. Uh, I spoke with her extensively, I'm gonna speak with her again in the, at the start of spring. Uh, to see where we can fit into the next event, because they liked it so much, they are coming back to Frederick. Um, I don't know if it's October, it could be at the end of the summer, uh, but the bottom line is they. They wanna be involved and they wanna be involved here, which I was very appreciative of, so I'll see what we can get for ourselves and our community in this nationally recognized event. And to reiterate what I said in an earlier meeting, it's USA Cycling who chooses the Olympic team. So they're a rather heady organization and when we have their attention, we have good things coming here. In closer issues, Pembroke Woods in phase one, uh, I've spoken to staff about paving in phase one. There's been some requests there because there is definitely deterioration on the streets there, and also we talked about street light posts. Um, and we're sort of in preliminary discussion, so I wanna make sure folks in phase one know that this is in process. Um, and like Mr. Ritz, I think it's worthwhile having that discussion regarding the lawn watering meters. That was, uh, requested by, um, uh, one of our town residents. And outside of that, uh, thank you to town staff for being available, um, I had, oh, one other meeting, not to forget that. Um, discussions relating to communication and process, and I think in a future time, we might hear more about that for the commission. Regarding process of how information moves through the town staff and through to the commissioners and to the community. Uh, and also, uh, how we are working on our communication, okay, so. That's something that hopefully we'll be hearing more about at a future point in time, and then with that, I close my remarks, Mr. Mayor, I turn to you for your comments, sir.
All right, thank you very much, thank you, uh, after our, uh, October fourth, uh, regularly scheduled. Uh, town meeting, uh, uh, on October twelfth, uh, to the, uh, Maryland Municipal League Conference with. Uh, Clark, Manny Shaw and gather we accepted the Sustainable Maryland Award for the tale. Congratulations, everybody, uh, contribution they made and, uh. Is Shaw got a compliment from, uh, the director, executive director that, uh. Her application was the best of any jurisdiction, oh, that's not my stomach, that's my puppy right here, my lab puppy. If you hear something, he's, he's missing his other two, uh, Wednesday, uh, Chris or Davis. Uh, I went down waste hot exhibits at the square on Wednesday the thirteenth and, uh, uh, for some picture takes. Uh, photo ops with them, uh, and, uh. Congratulations to them for all they've done for the town, uh, that saved though, uh, well, later that week, uh. Uh, I gave a walk the address for the Frederick County Health Mount Facility at, uh, at the, uh. Well, uh, sometimes it's termed urgent care, Richard Davis was also in attendance. October seventeenth gave wealthy address at the third annual Emmitsburg Agricultural Council Community, uh, beauty event with Myers. Yeah, Commissioner Sweetie was there, uh, lent his good voice in the combo in the back, it was a one wonderful situation. And then on October nineteenth, twenty-five members from the Gaysburg Walking Club, uh, were having. Lunch after their walkabout, uh, in town at Carriage House and it would think he called the, uh. The town resident, also a, uh, G W C member for bringing it down, uh, just to keep everybody up on the radar. We will have a Christmas tree lighting, it'll be the first Monday of, uh, December, yeah, uh. Uh, we'll have times and everything announced at it, I did confirm with the carriage house day that they are, I think they're turning at the Chris- Christmas spirit. This year, not the spirit of Christmas, they, they will have that, uh, in the evening after our tree lighting. So, uh, thank you, I think that's it.
Mr. Lindsey, I believe you signed up for the land purchase piece, is that correct?
Yeah.
Your mic calls, can't be sure, mic called.
Mr. Lindsey, sorry, you're signed up for the land purchasing, is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay, so not regular public comment, okay, terrific, so I wanna confirm that, okay, thank you. I'm thinking you're in Zoom and here you are in the room, my apologies, okay, like yelling to the ceiling, okay, all right. With that in mind, we now turn to administrative business proclamation for municipal government works month, November twenty twenty-one for consideration.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read this?
All right, here we go, working the dials here, yes, please go ahead, I appreciate it.
Okay, every year, um, uh, Emmitsburg participates in municipal government works month. And this year's gonna be no different, um, this proclamation related to municipal government works month, November twenty twenty-one. Uh, the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg proclaimed November twenty twenty-one to be municipal government works month. Whereas the town of S was established in seventeen eighty-five and whereas Maryland is home to a hundred and fifty-six other municipalities. Where, and whereas municipal government represents the most responsive level of government, allowing citizens to have direct access to elected officials. And whereas in an effort to educate citizens about municipal government and the importance of their participation. Town of Emmitsburg is proud, proud to promote municipal government awareness and whereas municipalities have enhanced the quality of life. For their respective residents, maintaining natural and historic sites and structures and helping to make Maryland a great place to live, work, play and explore. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the mayor and council of the town of Emmitsburg, Maryland do hereby join. Maryland Municipal League and declaring November twenty twenty-one to be municipal government works month in Emmitsburg. Adopted this first day of November twenty twenty-one. Can we get a vote on the proclamation, please?
Commissioner Fisher, uh, O'Donnell, could you, there you go.
Yes, sir. Is there a motion to accept the proclamation as presented?
I'll make a motion to accept the proclamation as presented.
Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second that.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns, seconded by Commissioner Ritz, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero, all commissioners voting. Thank you. We now turn to agenda item B for our, uh, administrative business. Have we taken care of this through what we discussed in the opening of the meeting regarding items that were addressing?
Letter B, I believe that was, uh, Commissioner Ritz's, uh, request, the format of our agendas.
Oh, Mr. Ritz, I apologize, I thought this was for tonight's meeting specifically, all right, continue, yes, sir.
No, okay, well, thank you, I, basically, you know, we set the agenda items at the end of the month, at the end of the meeting. For the following month, I was just hoping that, you know, once we list those on the website, and if there was a way. To show somewhat of a summary, what we're, what we're talking about, for example, if it's, you know, for consideration, a modification to ordinance. A B C one, two, three, even, even a brief explanation of what that ordinance is and what we're, are going to be voting on. Rather than it coming out. Right before the meeting, knowing the agenda packets are made public, when we receive them and then they're, they're listed. That way, if somebody's interested, they'll know exactly what we're talking about and it's not at the last minute, so to speak. That was part, that was.
Sure.
The gist of it.
Uh, any other thoughts from commissioners regarding an executive summary?
Not trying to make extra work for town staff, I wanna reiterate that too, just, just, but just, you know. Just a little bit more information.
There's value.
I think it would be helpful.
I think it would.
Sometimes people do ask, what's that, you know, and then.
And we, we saw that at the meeting when we talked about the B ordinance and it wasn't clear that it was a B ordinance.
Exactly.
So, you know, I think this is a good response to that.
Bob discussed it with staff and then, uh, don't think it's an unreasonable request, there are some things that are. Maybe could use a little bit more information, some are very self-explanatory, so I think we could do a little bit better.
Exactly.
When we put it up on the website with a little bit of explanation on, um, what the items are.
Great, okay, do you need a vote for direction, or is this something that we just are on board with?
No, I think we're good.
Terrific, okay, thank you.
Cool, thanks.
All right. Okay, we now turn to item I, our consent agenda, okay. Okay.
I, I have a reappointment for Bernard Franklin for this advisory committee for September, run, run from September third. On two thousand twenty-one to September third of two thousand twenty-three.
Terrific, is there a motion to that effect?
Still moved.
Thank you, is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Ritz, but then seconded by Commissioner Burns, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, sorry, any against? Hearing none, the motion carries five to zero, thank you very much. And thank you to Mr. Franklin for serving the town again, we turn now to the treasurer for his report.
Hearing this is treasurer's report for the town of Emm- Emmitsburg for November first, twenty twenty-one. This is the cash activity as of October twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-one, we have a cash balance of seven million four hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-nine. We had deposits in the amount of four hundred and ten thousand one hundred and ninety-two, withdrawals in the amount of three hundred and fifty-five thousand nine hundred and seventy-one. Which left us with an operating balance forward of seven million five hundred and thousand one hundred and ninety, the top ten check amounts are listed below.
I have one correction on line item number four. It should read fourth quarter fiscal year twenty-one law enforcement services. While we were processing, um, the first quarter of this year, uh, we realized that Frederick County had not billed us for the fourth quarter of last year. That's why you see two of, um, those checks.
Very good, thank you, um, do we need to note the modification? No, okay, very good. Don't call us, we'll call you, maybe, I don't know.
I wish.
All right, we move forward. We turn to item K, uh, the planning commission report.
Mr. President, thank you, now, planning commission met on October twenty-fifth. Where we conditionally approved the new Creamery Road Pump Station Improvement Plat and the addition plat, the latter. Um, includes an approximately half an acre lot that was erroneously not included with the approximate. Nine and a half acre parcel of which the existing pump station. Nine and a half acre parcel of which the existing pump station is a part of. Mr. Golden is letting us off easy next month, this month, and we're not having a planning meeting. And we will be back on track, I believe, in December. I think that's the second one this year.
Second one this year.
So we've been busy.
Yeah, so crazy.
But we'll be back at it in December and. That's. That's all I have unless you needed to add anything else.
That's all I have.
All right, thank you.
The board will be. Reviewing, not reviewing, but however approving the addition plot since it's town owned property. One, two properties merge. Since it's town owned, the board will review that at their December meeting. So.
Okay.
Just follow up with that.
Thank you. Sorry, I was trying to stall there a little bit.
Understood. Thank you. Any questions for the planning commission liaison? Hearing none, we'll move forward. We turn now to our first agenda item. Thank you. This is a discussion related to the MS four permit requirements presentation at the town meeting by staff. And A R R, A R R O Consulting Delegate Jesse Pippi will be on hand and is. We welcome you, sir. Thank you for attending. Staff from Senator Huff's office is not able to attend. Confirming that.
Correct. He sent an email and said that he was gonna try to arrange a call between the town and M D E.
Very good. Okay, so let's move forward. Staff, return this to you.
Zach will give a brief overview and then we'll turn over, turn it over to Arrow.
Yeah, so we thought it would be appropriate just to give a quick two minute overview of our current costs of the program. I know the the board's aware, well aware of our costs and I know the delegates well aware of the expensive cost of this program. But we just wanted to give a kind of a brief presentation for the public, just so they're aware. So our total restoration cost during the current year, current current per, excuse me, current permit year. Equates to approximately six hundred and ninety thousand dollars. This does not include staff time for street sweeping, catch base cleaning, my time or other requirements set forth in our permit such as. Educational illicit discharge detection, construction management or other components. Luckily, we were able to form partnerships with Streamlink Education and the Daughters of Charity. For the tree planting project in order to lessen the burden on our taxpayers. We were able to obtain a four hundred thirty four thousand dollar grant from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources for our tree planting. And also thirty four thousand from the Chesapeake Bay Trust for the Silo Hill Basin Project. However, this still leaves approximately two hundred and twenty one thousand in funds that the town must find in our budget. To complete the mandatory projects by the end of twenty twenty three and then the cycle starts all over again. We expect the cost to increase as we move. Onto our next permit term, which is from two thousand twenty three to two thousand twenty eight. As grants become more competitive, as more municipalities are now mandated MS four communities. And as projects become more difficult, we're trying to define the lowest bearing fruit, as we always call it. The cheapest projects, the easier projects to meet our mandate. So we have invited Mark Harmon from Arrow Engineering, who is an expert on federal MS four requirements to give a very brief presentation. And also to answer any questions the board may have. And Mark, if I could invite you up to the speaker, who's pushed a little button.
And if I could ask you, please identify yourself, list your address, your business address would bind your organization and then the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everybody. My name is Mark Harmon. I'm with Arrow Consulting. We are located at one oh eight West Airport Road and that's in Lititz, Pennsylvania. I'm here tonight really to address questions and concerns. I think more than outline the program for you. I think most folks, whether it be the board or the public, is going to get a little bit more out of that. I think prior to the question, I thought maybe I'd just get a little bit of my background so you know who I am when I'm providing answers to these questions and then maybe. Just give you a few comments relative to the MS four program. So again, my name is Mark Harmon with Arrow Consulting. We're an engineering and environmental firm. We've been around since nineteen forty eight. I've been with the company for eighteen years now. I'm a licensed geologist and I'm also a certified stormwater professional. I've been involved with the MS four program since two thousand and three. Currently, I oversee eighteen MS four programs in Pennsylvania and Maryland. So everything from full implementation to. Just working with staff and providing training. Also provide professional training as well as training for municipalities and counties. Year to date, probably the last thing I did was I was a presenter for EPA to help. Them provide some guidance to state and county governments. So I spent a tremendous amount of time with MS four. So I feel confident that I can certainly address, maybe not satisfied, but certainly can address any questions or concerns anybody has. Just real quick about MS four. And again, I don't want to spend a lot of time. I know that you got a full agenda tonight is. I, a lot of these conversations have about MS four, I think we're losing the bigger picture when we're talking about it. Certainly it involves flooding and stormwater contamination, a lot of these issues. But really on a larger scale, this whole program is is revolved around changing perceptions really about society. If I could equate it to anything else, I would probably equate it to recycling in the seventies and seat belts in the eighties. We were looking at a strong educational component. And then unfortunately, the legislation allowed the violation portion of it to come in. But as time moves on, we really move away from the idea that. Through the education, the idea that you need to do the enforcement, you know, with this slow change over time and the education. People are willing to accept that the problem associated with stormwater significant. And they're willing to invest more, whether that's their time, their effort. You know, just tonight hearing some of the conversation talking about sewage. Twenty years ago, the costs associated with sewage that you have now, people never would have dreamed of it. There's charging stations out back. Again, twenty years ago, nobody would have ever dreamed of these things. So. I think the MS four program, I'm involved in it a lot and and I think it is a good program. I understand the heartburn associated with the program. But again, I think from a larger scale, what we're really trying to do is. Shift thoughts, concerns, really opinions relative to stormwater. Over to the environmental problem that it is. I mean, we we know we have problems with impaired waters. We know have problems with Chesapeake Bay, Delaware Bay. And really, the only way we're going to address those problems is changing attitudes. So I don't want to drone on too much about that. But but that's ultimately what the program's trying to do. And and with that, I certainly can provide additional info, information, address any questions or concerns anybody has. I think that would be more helpful than me quoting regulations to everybody.
Sure. Mr. Davis?
Oh, yeah, I knew you were gonna throw me under the bus. I'm ready.
No, sir. No, I just thought this is. Part of your menu this evening.
Yeah. Well, first of all, thank you so much for coming to talk to us. And and I I agree that, you know, taking care of the environment is is very, very important to us. It's just that little communities like us, the the unfunded mandates are getting outrageous. And and I feel that those hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're throwing towards this program. We could be doing a lot more by fixing our sewer lines and eliminating the sewage overflows and things like that. Before we, you know, look at the at the bigger picture that, you know, and that's just just me and it's. It's just seems to me it's getting out of hand. So while I want to support the program. Again, the government unfunded mandates, it just makes it tough.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Burns.
So to follow up with what Commissioner Davis said, and I guess the question ultimately comes to you would be. What was the reasoning in picking the certain areas that did? If you look at the national map. We need to scattered with just random areas throughout. I know, you know, according to them, they're saying four percent of the land area, but eighty percent of the population. So obviously they're targeting. Population dense areas, which. Is most of Maryland with the exception of out west and some down south. But you look at somewhere like up here in Emmitsburg, where we're not population dense. We don't have the communities that you have south of Frederick or. Even east of Frederick. So why is it they target certain smaller towns that, you know, we ultimately suffer with the amount of money we have to to find and and do these things? You know, what was their reasoning behind picking the areas that they did?
Strict definition that that EPA would give you would be it's based on urbanized areas that are defined by the census. Why some areas are picked before others. I don't know if there's a formula for that. If I had to guess, a lot of it had would have to do with legis legislation associated with like the Chesapeake Bay. They're certainly going to target the areas where there's a little bit more litigation going on. That's my personal opinion. But again, the the strict definition that EPA would give you is is if you're a defined urbanized area, based on the census. You are or you will be an MS four permit holder.
With the exception of New Jersey, which is almost the entire state, Maryland's the only other state that's basically. Required to do it. And if you look at, you know, the map, okay, California has a few areas, San Francisco, LA, Seattle, that area. Florida's bits and pieces and stuff like that. And. I just wonder, you know, they look at the census data. It seriously affects some of those smaller towns and I'm sure Delegate Pippy can follow up with this too because he he works with everybody up here. You have these small towns, Tony Town, Emmitsburg, Thurmont, that don't have that population density and. The fact that we get lumped into that, it seriously affects our bottom line at the end of the day.
Yeah, again, I, you know, I certainly, you know, cannot disagree with with that sentiment. Unfortunately, once you're designated. It's you're you're always going to be an MS four community. There's really, I'm not aware of any way where it's removed. I think the only way it would be removed if somebody makes the claim one day that the Chesapeake Bay is clean. And we don't need to do anything else. In lieu of that, I, you know, I see the regulations becoming larger. If we go back fifty years, you know, I I come from a family of carpenters. My grandfather would laugh at you when he was involved in the business that we were going to pump sewage, you know. So I think, again, I think a lot of it is perception. You know, I do hear unfunded mandates a lot, but in reality, everything is really an unfunded mandate, you know, that I I'm not aware of too many. Requirements where the state or the federal government comes in and says you need to do this and here's the money to do it. I mean, that's. But again, I think it gets down to your perception. You know, everybody's very comfortable spending a significant amount of money on sewer. Whereas I'm not sure twenty years ago if they would have. You know, so we are unfortunately, we are at the early stages of this. Tracking the MS four program back, you're really going back to the Clean Water Act in seventy two. So it this ball took a long time to get rolling and I just don't see it it ever slowing down. Each president that that has proposed any type of budget, I always follow closely. It doesn't seem to matter whether it's Republican or Democrat. The budget is not reflecting any reductions in anything related to MS four. There were some reductions. With the last presidential. Budget, but those really involve pollution relative to air. There wasn't much in the way of water at all. Unfortunately, the first thing I do when any new budget comes out is. Is go through that. What we're seeing from each federal budget is probably less and less money available on the federal level to help states. So it's really creating a a much larger problem as we move forward.
Have they taken into consideration then the budgets of the smaller municipalities that are being required to handle these? So if you look at. Go down to Rockville, Potomac and things of that nature, they they blink an eye at this. It's it's not that big of a deal, but as you move north and. East or west from that, you know, the Mason Dixon line, we'll call it, you know, it has a serious impact on those that. Has there ever been talk of, okay, hey, look, the municipality is much bigger in this area. They can handle more versus the smaller municipalities or anything of that nature?
Not that I'm aware of. I mean, it it's really been more of a. I don't want to say a scientific exercise, but you know, the the social component, I'm not aware that that's ever been a consideration when an MS four community has been been named.
Mr. Ritz.
No, I just want to say I wanted to echo what Commissioner Davis and Burn said, you know, I I'm not here to snub my nose at the. At the. Environment, you know, that I plan ahead for the future. Again, it's the the small communities. I think that. You know. We're going to end up suffering, so to speak, as as it goes through, because we can like do so much grant wise and. You know, to help people out and it becomes that time where it's going to fall on our our residents, you know, and we have to. Potentially raise taxes, something which I'm fundamentally opposed to. I don't know how we're going to handle it. So that's just. Thinking ahead in the future for that, too.
Yeah, I think there's some creative ways maybe to ease the the pain a little bit. Some of the municipalities that I've worked with have looked at. Programs similar to what we see with transportation. Where adopt the road type programs where maybe individual persons or companies. Firms will come in and assist. I'm I'm not sure that's a long term answer. And. Probably should back up before I say this a little bit, but the long term of this program really is it's going to, it's going to be have to be managed by a utility. I I don't see that 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 any other way about it. Emmitsburg along with, you know, I've I've worked with Indian Head, Thurmont. I work with a number and, you know, again, the cost is going to keep going up. The requirements are going to change. They're only going to get more stringent. The demands on somebody like Zach are only going to go up and there's going to have to be a way to fund it. Again, I keep going back to the education portion. I think maybe myself right now would get upset. With the idea that I've got to pay an extra fee quarterly for something. Whereas again, maybe a ten or twenty years from now, the desire to react to the environment and to the stormwater and try to remedy the issue is going to be a little bit more palatable. To folk. So I think that's why there is such a strong educational component. I've worked with the town for three years now. I've come in, given the training. And I know just from day one dealing with public works versus we were here a couple of weeks ago, there's just a completely different perception and I'm seeing that just not here. But everywhere, it just becomes more palatable, I think, when people recognize what we're trying to achieve. I know that doesn't help, but.
I have a question.
Mr. Sweeney.
Thank you.
What happens if you don't comply?
Uh, right now, I believe the latest. Fine violation I heard of Prince George's County's paid four hundred and seventy five thousand dollars this summer.
I understand that. What about little towns like New Market and all them? We can't don't have the money or the people to charge more taxes for to pay for. If you don't have the money to pay it and you have no grant money to get. How are you going to penalize them when they don't have their money to pay?
That's just not, it's not an option. And now it's that's part of running a municipality. It's just not an option to say you're not going to pay it. Any more than it's not an option to say you're not going to pay your taxes.
Well, I mean, unpaid taxes, but in order to pay for some of these things costs hundreds of thousands of dollars. Some of the little smaller, smaller than we are and Burgess will never be able to cover. We have a couple of mergers in Maryland too and I don't know how they afford.
There's, you know, that again, there's a couple of different ways to help assist in it, but the long term answer may be there is going to be some type of a fee. Associated with it. I mean, that that's. I think the reality is it's not going to go away.
Right.
You're going to have to figure out a way to address it, just the same way you figured out ways to address water and sewer and these other components. So I I think that's probably the 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 burden that a board like yourself is going to be dealing with is figuring out the way. Without creating a fee, but the long term effect may in fact, like any other utility, be a quarterly fee.
But do they, is the same charges for everyone for, you know, to update the to do them, the MS four. To bring everything up to date or the fees the same for every single town?
No.
News, how they adjusted them?
No, the fees are based, you you have a sediment, for for instance, a sediment load requirement that you. Need to reduce that would be based on impervious. You for different best management practices, like a stormwater basin, based on the drainage area and the impervious that runs to it. You achieve a credit for that. So you could have one project or you could have fifty projects. That ultimately determines the cost to the town. So generally, you know, like with other. Components within the municipality, if you have new development, I see municipalities that are trying to pass some of that burden on to developers as part of the development, the same way you would do curb and sidewalk. So there's different ways depending on what's happening with land uses in the municipality. That help absorb it, but it really comes down to how many projects and what the cost of those projects are is what determines what you pay.
Okay, I was wondering how they charge. I mean, how much money each municipality will be able to afford to pay?
Yeah, so more or less what the regulators are coming in and saying, this is the sediment load, then Zach has to figure out what projects. To reduce that and then that decides the cost of it.
So your role with our community is you're a consultant with staff. You're providing an interpretation of what the guidelines that are imposed on us are. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are you providing a process that we can achieve these compliance goals that's being mandated by the EPA? I mean, do you provide a. Basically a timeline or a checklist to staff?
No, I I haven't been contracted to do any of that work. Mine has been very, very superficial, more or less just. Question and answer with Zach trying to help him out.
Okay.
We've, we've come in at no charge three times just to, you know, work with staff and update and really try to get the message out as a community service for Maryland. really try to get the message out as a community service for Mero. But yeah, we, we haven't been contracted for any of that work.
Okay. Well, that's appreciated. I didn't know that. Um, how far are we from getting across the, the finish line for our own municipal compliance? From what you understand.
That would be more of a, I, I'm, to be completely honest, we haven't been involved with the projects or the process to date with, with your compliance.
Okay. So that's strictly talent. All right.
Yeah, I can answer that question. So as the nutrient, nutrient reduction load, um, how they have it, how MD has it set up for the town is 20.452 acres of impervious that we have to treat. So for an example, um, you know, mechanical street sweeping, our staff does that in-house right now. Um, that reduces it by point three two one. Sure. Overall, it's an average. Same thing with catch basin cleaning, you know, that's point seven. So it's deducts off that 20. And then now we're getting into the more expensive, um, projects such as the Silo Hill Stormwater Pond. That's a big project that's going to treat 7.96 impervious acres. And then we go into our tree plantings, 11 acres at the wastewater treatment plant, which we're doing right now. That's going to be 4.18 acres of impervious removed. And then, um, the daughters of charity, 16 acres, that's going to be another 6.08. So we're continuing to deduct. We also did an outfall stabilization project over at our community, uh, park basin. Uh, that was a point zero four deduction and also our septic connections to the wastewater treatment plant at 500 and 502 East Main Street. They're going to deduct another, um, point three nine per property. So we are right on target to meet our deadline this time around.
Right.
But like I said in my presentation, the clock starts again.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
So Zach, so each, each permit term, we have to treat the 20 point.
Yeah. So that is actually going to increase. Um, as you know, people get sheds and driveways and new houses, it increases the impervious. So that's just going to slowly creep up every
Okay.
permit term.
Mr. Gold, let me come back to you for a moment. Mr. Harmon, let me come back to you for a moment.
Okay.
In your consulting role with the EPA, are they tapping your engineering expertise or your geological expertise or, because, because here's where I'm going. My thought would be, uh, if you could advocate for communities such as ours and small communities and carry that message, message to them. Everybody here is committed to a healthier environment. I mean, and, and like you said, that, that paradigm has shifted and the intent is to maintain that momentum and expand that momentum. You know, everybody wants to see, you know, the HL Menken quote about the bay, the great protein factory. We, we want to return to that, of course, and absolutely. But the other side of it is what you're hearing from us is we're in the squeeze right now and we're trying to, I would argue, protect our community from tax increases. And if you're talking about a cooperative water authority, again, that's an expense that I anticipate that we will incur in the future. Um, and I would say if that message could be carried forward for funding for that, that would abate a lot of the problems for our smaller and growing communities. I mean, as Mr. Golden just referenced, you know, we are growing, we're seeing the increased impervious surfaces and you know, that number is growing. But if it comes to this idea of a cooperative water authority, that entity is going to be a, a hungry and, you know, wanting, uh, machine. Um, and I, I anticipate what you're saying, there's a great deal of logic, you know, it, it seems like that could resolve the problem. But just even establishing that, the, the funding for that is staggering, what it, what it could require. Uh, on the other side of the issue, again, you know, everybody wants to clean water and, and it has tremendous value. We want to see a healthy environment. We want to be stewards and hand down something better to our, you know, successors. So if you can carry that message next time you're with EPA and they're sitting in an ex, you know, when you're on the panel and they're asking you the questions, carry that message for us because it's, it's important because, uh, it is impinging upon our standard of service to our community profoundly. And it's creating tremendous pressure in office on our staff who are pretty savvy, very sharp people who know what they're doing. And they're hard pressed to do the right things because they're being pulled by so many requirements. Uh, so if that could be carried forward, that would be very useful to us and it's appreciated you're here tonight. So um, any further questions for Mr. Harmon at this time?
No.
Yes, sir.
Is there ever a way of getting ahead? Like, so, I mean, obviously we're going to do all this work to be qualified by 22,
23.
23. Does that count for us going ahead for the next five year cycle or is that? I, is there ever a way that we could proactively try to get ahead of what the next cycle is and the next cycle and the next cycle? Because obviously, as you said, this isn't going away. Sure. We're going to continue to be hit upon and, and things of that nature. Is there, in all your experiences, is there ways of getting ahead of this? Like, hey, let's plant 50 extra trees or things of that nature that counts towards the following cycle or anything of that nature?
That has actually backfired in a couple of scenarios. The problem becomes if this is, you know, this is more of a marathon. So it's, you know, it's a ladder to the sky. There's always another rung. The focus today is early, but as we move through the program, the next permit cycle, we have not seen that permit. And if there's a greater emphasis on another contaminant or another component, the problem is if you've, you've put something in that's going to address sediment and now the shift starts to go into other materials, you would not get credit for that. So unfortunately, I don't think, I would probably put it more in terms of sewage treatment. You know, you, you have to treat for today. If additional regulations come down the road, it doesn't do any good for your treatment people to guess what those may be. You almost have to wait for them to come and then address them as they come to the door, unfortunately.
Okay, for Donald.
Mr. Mayor, yes, sir.
I think, uh, our planner of is working on a greenscape going down, uh, the hill at, uh, Door Seat that it, and if we get a greater understanding and support of the community for things like that, that they can contribute to offsets, you know, but we have to be really have a lot of savvy in that. And, uh, we are planting a lot of trees. We're looking at different things, but it goes back to President Obama, Executive Order 13508. I mean, it goes back to the Clean Water Act, as Arrow has pointed out, the representative has pointed out, but, uh, uh, they've taken over the bay and it's very hard. It's like tilted windmills and, uh, I've got, uh, they go against the EPA and, and like I said, I, I brought, in the previous meeting, I brought it up to MML. And, uh, there's no support for it there. And, uh, so you were crashed around there a little bit on, on that, but, uh, uh, you, you mentioned the savvy of our staff, it, it, it is, yeah. A very savvy oriented staff, but we have, had to look into things like this. We have to support things like the greenscape going down uh, Door Seat Avenue. It's, uh, instead digging our hills into a change. Let's, 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 let's look at things like this that, uh, with open mind. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir. So Mr. Golden, I'm coming back to you and it's the point question. Is it possible for private homeowners and planting a tree on their property to add to this credit program or is it municipal managed property that makes the difference?
So, you know, one tree from a homeowner or a business, even 10 trees isn't going to create any credits for us. Unfortunately, it has to be acres.
Okay. All right. Well, that's disturbing because it would be nice if we had that ability, you know, if we had 20 households that'd be willing to add one tree each or whatever. Okay. So the next question I'll throw at you, Mr. Harmon, then is this, there's got to be a committee that sits down somewhere and creates the new set of standards that's coming down the pike. How does a small town get a voice on that? Is that something we turn to a representative to? Or do you know, do you know what process there is to get a voice in that process?
I'm not aware that, that, that EPA even provides that. I mean, you know, you know, typically we would have a scenario if something was going to be adopted like an ordinance or legislation or something like that, there's a public comment because this is an ongoing permit. I'm not aware that that actually occurs or I have never, never had any type of experience in it. I know one of the questions that Zach asked me very early on is, you know, based on my opinion, if they're going to audit people, how are they going to audit you? I have dug through, I have not been able to find anything directly. However, again, stepping back and looking at it, I tell Zach, keep the website up to date. Cause if I'm in my office in DC or in Chicago and you're telling me I got to audit 10 municipalities, I can go right to your website. If your website looks good, I go to another one. It doesn't look so good, probably going to get, you know, a, a little more of a reaction from the one that looks bad. So I think a lot of it is, is perception. Uh, the other things I shared with Zach was focus on the operation and maintenance. If you can create a situation where you can install some type of best management practice and eliminate some type of operation and maintenance. For example, most of your swales come off the road, you have the swell, it transports it somewhere to a pipe or whatever, and it goes on and on. Just by digging out the bottom of that swell, you can over detain, get some infiltration, things like that, and it becomes no mo. I mean, you may be able to create a situation with a little bit of upfront work. You can install something that reduces maintenance and maybe that helps with some of the cost and an overall effect of the program. So I think there are some savvy options. But it, it, I, at least in my opinion, the first thing I look at is operation and maintenance. If somebody hires a consultant like myself and the first thing they want to do is come in and base everything on numbers. The problem with that is if it is a nightmare to take care of, the O and M costs drive it through the roof. So if you focused on O and M, use the grants to do the installation, I think that's going to be the best bang for the buck. So there are some ways to make it a little bit more palatable.
Any further questions?
So this is never, this is ongoing forever. It's never going to stop.
I, I don't see it stopping unless the goal, all the impairments are removed from the waterways by the state. Cause that's ultimately, you know, that's the other part of this.
Change in legislation.
No, they would actually, at this point, they would have to say that the streams are where they need to be. They're, they're not degrading any further. So that, that's the second part of this is.
But only Maryland and Delaware is, is bad. Nobody else is as bad anywhere else.
Oh, yeah. Yes.
But how come they're not doing it?
Who, you'd have to define they.
How come the word?
Like Pennsylvania.
When he said there's most of the states, how many, where did he go?
You know, Florida, New Jersey's, the entire state, uh, Florida has bits and pieces around, uh, different waterways. Uh, California was San Francisco, LA, Seattle was up around the bay in Seattle. Entire Midwest, it's kind of empty. There's certain population dense areas that were, uh, covered, but so we're about to look at if you're looking at a marstail point, because you see so much empty space.
So much empty space and a lot of green and blue, uh, for people that are in phase one and phase two. Have they implemented phase two yet?
Right, right now, no. It's, I mean, right, and, and looking at them, I guess from my perspective, I'm mainly familiar with draining to the Chesapeake and the Delaware. So that, that's a lot of my focus is there's just major contamination in those areas. I mean, eventually I see MS four expanding to everywhere, just not areas that are, are urbanized. Cause it, you know, again, that, that, that's a much bigger problem, I think, in, in certain areas. And if you go more out towards the Midwest, I guess you don't have the population. Maybe you don't have the impairments. I'm not sure. I'm not familiar with those areas.
And just to echo that, if, if you look at the map, LA is phase two, but everything surrounding LA is phase one. So it, it's interesting how they picked and choose those where, you know, certain things. And obviously you have Delaware, the Chesapeake are the two major waterways down here. Uh, if you look at, you know, Florida, it's Jacksonville, Tampa and their bay down there, get down to Miami. Parts of Houston, looks like Dallas. It, it's, it's really the population dense areas that they initially.
And industrialized waterways.
This is only for municipalities to, that they're, the land that they own and Burgess and cities. And it's only the, the, uh, the, um, not the residential out, outskirts like we have. Our, our land doesn't go too far because we're only a small little town. Some are very small. I mean, even twice as small as us, but if they have, how they're going to do, I don't understand how, how they're going to be able to do that when if they're twice as small as we are and, and don't have, have half the many peoples we have. Our, our population is only like 25 to, to 3,000 residents. So.
I mean, yeah, it's unfortunately, it's a regulation that's going to have to be met. I mean, they're going to have to figure out a way to do it. And if that final way is increasing taxes, then that is what they're going to have to do because.
Will the county do that?
No.
So Mr. Sweeney, let me, let me jump in.
I don't.
Mr. Pippy's asked to come up. So, um, Mr. Harmon, I want to say thank you. If you could stay for a little bit while Mr. Pippy speaks, is that?
Sure.
Clock.
Absolutely.
So.
You know, like all the mountain town and, um, they would have to have a county tax covering or, or some of these, it's not going to survive.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for being here, Mr.
Well, I tell you, my friend, Commissioner Davis and Mayor Briggs are going to owe me a couple of hours, uh, for coming up. So a couple of questions for the gentleman here. One, this program only impacts municipalities, correct? And not the county as a whole?
Uh, it, it, there's permit holders that are municipalities, but there's also based on density, other, uh, like a large college campus could, could be an MS four permit holder.
Mr. Harmon.
He would need to speak up.
Yeah, because we're doing a dialogue, which was unexpected.
So I'll, I'll phrase it in form of a, of a statement unless a question, I'll, I'll spare you. Okay. So a couple of things. One, I feel your pain. Um, nothing is more irritating when someone says, sorry, there can be nothing that can be done. And I got into government for that very reason, because at the end of the day, you know, government should be there in a customer service role, not in a, in another one. I don't hold you responsible for that because you're, you're not the federal government. So first things first.
He's our good guy.
He's a good guy. So we do have a federal representative. So the federal Clean Water Act was mentioned. Uh, this has been a long process. Kick down to the federal government through the EPA, then it goes down to the Maryland Department of the Environment, which we have a good relationship with Secretary Ben Grumbles. So we can actually get him on a call or to come out. We should actually get, uh, Congressman Raskin and Secretary Grumbles together, um, for a call. And the reason I bring that up is that in my legislative district, for example, we have 11 municipalities, all under 10,000 people. Um, Rosemont is a technically a municipality, is a village which is impacted by the MS four. You know, they have 50 people that live in that community. God forbid somebody builds a shed and then they're going to have to raise taxes. So I mean, you can see how there is a disparity because in Frederick County, although the population's 275,000, um, it seems like the municipalities are the ones getting picked on here when the majority of the population are outside of the municipalities. You know, the city of Frederick only has about 75,000 people. So you do the math. I mean, there's 150,000 people that are not in a municipality that are probably not sharing any of the burden. And, and again, I'm not one to raise taxes or fees or say things like sharing the burden. But when you're a municipality and you have a bill that's due, there's only one way to pay it and that's usually to have to raise fees or taxes. And I know you guys don't want to do that. So that's why this conversation is very important. So things that I would look for, for, um, I'm assuming, because there is a phase one and a phase two. I think originally in 1990, the phase one was if you were a county over 100,000, which Frederick County was. Um, but phase two is if you're over 250, which we are now. So are we in phase one or phase two?
We're phase one.
We're still phase one. Okay. So phase two is the one that has the six different extra requirements and kickers that you have to, um, education, all these other categories that you have to deal with. So questions that I would have, um, for maybe Congressman Raskin and Secretary Ben Grumbles would be, um, has there ever been any interpretation or modification, those committee hearings you referenced related to sharing the cost of burden? So for example, if you have a municipality that has 50 people in it, but you have a unincorporated area like Urbana, are they paying this, the majority of that? Because the way the state law works is there's like 10 counties that are part of the MS four program. Uh, in Maryland, we call them like the big eight, like the big eight counties. Frederick County is the fastest growing county in the state. So we are the big eight. So we're within that 10 counties that the MS four program uh, adversely impacts, if you look at it that way. So my question would be, can we get some clarification on? Is it, is there an adverse impact on our municipalities versus a high dense population area such as Urbana or Lake Linganor or Imesville and all these, which I represent. But that's where the population is. It's not in these tiny municipalities like Emmitsburg, right? Um, so I'd want to find out that. Um, we also, uh, looked into nutrient trading. So there are some things that I guess municipalities can do to maybe, uh, get rid of the actual financial burden, maybe some creative ways. So we want to look at what we can do to save you guys some money. As far as grants, uh, it was mentioned by your town planner that you did receive almost 500,000 in grants. So something that I can help with specifically is until we maybe figure this out, maybe we should apply for grants. Um, I mean, the state of Maryland does have a surplus at the moment. Uh, you know, if you have a $200,000 bill that you can't pay and it's related to the environment, maybe we can take that down to Annapolis and see if we can help you guys out. I'd be happy to spearhead that uh, with my colleagues. Um, but yeah, I mean, uh, we also have a delegation meeting on December 4th, um, prior to the legislative session. If this is a big item and you have a bill that's due soon, it might behoove you to send somebody to the delegation meeting to present this issue and say, hey, you know, we can't. we can't raise taxes, we can't raise fees, we have this bill due, this is the issue we're dealing with, you know, what can the delegation do? Or present to the rest of the general assembly for the upcoming session. So I would keep that date in mind. That's December 4th. It's frustrating. I mean, you know, at the end of the day, I mean, I fight it. I'm kind of a small government type guy. I tend to think less is more. Um, I do believe in personal responsibility and I do believe we should take care of environment, take care of our community. But when you implement a very broad and very large program, there are going to be costs associated with it. And you know, the issue like we're seeing here is that it seems like the municipalities are taking the burden. You know, the burden is on all the municipalities to cover whatever costs are associated with the MS four program. And you know, if you pride yourself on a lean and mean government, you know, efficient, it's tough to meet some of these mandates. And it is, according to Commissioner David, it's an unfunded mandate. It's exactly what it is. And, uh, I gotta tell you, taxpayers don't like them, you know, municipal government officials don't like them. Uh, I can guarantee you the residents of Emmitsburg won't like them. Um, so I appreciate what you guys are doing, but, uh, just to reiterate, um, if we can maybe have somebody attend the delegation meeting on December 4th, our office can also reach out to Congressman Raskin and Secretary Grumbles and see if we can get some clarification on what Emmitsburg's options are. Uh, we can also look at some grants for the delta between what you've already paid or have covered versus what you still owe. Um, and then I talked to Mayor Briggs about kind of putting something in place for the future to figure out how we're going to address this going forward. Um, and I would recommend we exhaust all options before raising any fees or taxes. That would be my suggestion for all of you. Um, and then I'm happy to.
Thank you.
Answer any questions if you have any for me. Uh, I'm not an expert on, on the topic. Um, I try to do a little bit of research, but um, you know, we gotta do what we can to keep, uh, people's tax dollars in their pockets instead of going to wherever. So.
Mr. Ritz, question?
I guess, I guess we'll talk amongst ourselves or figure something out if someone's going to attend. Um, I think that that would behoove the town.
Well, I think it's imperative, absolutely. I mean.
It may be a, a virtual meeting as well. So that might be more helpful, but yeah.
Great.
Yep. So, and again, and I'll just leave it with this. I mean, you have a federal representative. This is, this is up that person's wheelhouse. The problem is that person lives down in Montgomery County and Tacoma Park. And you know, some of the needs of the more rural parts of the states are not always in alignment with our more higher populated areas of the state. Maryland is a great state and we have, it's very diverse as far as topography and geography. And you know, hopefully we're trying to get some of these congressional districts worked out. The last congressman lived on a farm uh, and represented your interests and he probably was more in alignment with some of the concerns that folks up this way have. Um, and so we just want to make sure it's my priority. You guys, issues are my priority. Um, I have 11 municipalities that are all going to have similar issues. And you know, we're going to do whatever we can do to, you know, keep you guys straight. So.
Have you heard other municipalities bring this concern forward?
So Myersville, uh, sued and it went all the way up to the court of appeals. So this issue has run the, the gamut in Maryland. And I think one point that the gentleman mentioned is that, I mean, it is law and, uh, other municipalities have challenged it. Myersville, for example, has challenged it. Uh, as soon as 2016, I think the Court of Appeals, which is Maryland Supreme Court actually upheld the interpretation that they had to, they did have to follow the requirements of the program. But to me, you know, we, we should look at it from all angles. I mean, if there's something that we can do to comply, you know, and I, and I mentioned that nutrient trading, and I don't know if that's the right term, but I think there are things we could possibly do that might save money, creative. Also, I think we could look at interpretation. And you know, we just, we just got to explore all options. Um, and we got to get the right people at the table to do it. So.
Ms. Willetts regarding the delegation meeting. Do you feel we could have something prepared? So we could, uh, participate in that meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Terrific. Okay. Thank you. That's great to know.
Yeah. And I'll, and I'll leave you with this too. I mean, I, so Secretary Ben Grumbles has actually been very helpful. Uh, New Market, for example, um, we the state contributed millions of dollars to their streetscape program. I think we contributed to your streetscape program as well. But, um, when we did that, all of the clogged drains that had been clogged for 200 years, because New Market's very old, were now unclogged. So all that rainwater, you know, we cleared all the drains. It was all beautiful. We had those, uh, historic flags, like you were talking about with the veterans, but not. But all the storm water was running off that main drag into people's property. And so then they were now required to build like a, um, a filtration, a stormwater pond. It was like $800,000. But, um, I actually brought Secretary Ben Grumbles out to New Market and we walked the property and the state of Maryland actually contributed the majority of that cost. And so sometimes there are issues that have costs, but then sometimes the state of Maryland can help out. And so that's my role is to if those options as far as grants are available and, um, you know, at, at a minimum, we can get them out here. So.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any further questions for the representative?
I'm good for now. Thank you.
Mr. Davis? Okay.
Good. All right.
Appreciate your time.
And I do have to go unfortunately, but I appreciate you guys having me and I look forward to hearing, um, and I'll actually leave a card with your staff here. Look forward to hearing from you guys and we'll, we'll go from there. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, I couldn't get unmuted. Uh, Delegate Pippy, thank you so much for coming.
You're welcome, Frank. You owe me two hours, buddy.
I was gonna buy you supper. That's why I left town.
Well played, sir. Well played. Okay. Um, any further comment related to agenda item number one from staff or elected?
No, just thanks to Mr. Harmon for coming in as well. Thank you.
Harmon, thank you. Truly appreciate it. Okay. So we now turn to agenda item three, correct? Yes. Okay. Very good. So item, agenda item number two, which would have been approval of an order declaring 507 East Main Street is hazardous and dangerous as a hazardous and dangerous building for consideration. That item is now postponed. We now turn to agenda item number three.
Thank you. Again, this is for the new employee, uh, for the water and sewer operator trainee. It has been included in the budget for the last two years, so it is a budgeted position. Uh, we would not need to transfer any monies or make any, um, changes to the current budget. I'll just highlight a little bit of it. We, uh, we advertised for the position in, on the town's website, the Facebook page, uh, indeed, and a water and sewer specific job board. On the recommendations of Dan Thistle, who is the superintendent and Jared Bratner, who is the lead operator, we advertised for a trainee for the trainee position. We had 47 applicants for the position. We scheduled five for interviews. Uh, one was a no show and one canceled. So we conducted, uh, three interviews and as a result of the interviews, it myself, uh, Amanda Haddaway, Dan Thistle and Jared Bratner, we sat on the interview and then we reviewed all the candidates with, uh, Mayor Briggs. And, uh, we've recommended a gentleman named, uh, Sorin Crowell, C R O W E L L. He's from Fairfield, Pennsylvania. He does not have any water and sewer experience. Uh, we've hired trainees in the past that did not. However, he just, uh, completed work as a chemical reactor operator, which required the attention to detail and understanding the processes and procedures of working in plants and, uh, he, we felt very confident that he could handle all the training requirements to obtain his water and sewer licenses as well as a CDL license. Um, he was extremely diligent about safety protocols during the interview. Um, he excelled on, on that question in particular. Um, he was very, um, had a lot of energy, very excited, um, eager to start with the job. Uh, we, based on the mayor's recommendation, uh, we prepared a letter of, um, an offer letter to him. He did accept that letter. Um, he is available to start immediately. Uh, the position starts at a grade three at 39,500. Once he completes his, uh, training and obtains some of his temporary licenses, and then ultimately his water and sewer licenses, he will, um, be moved up to a water and sewer operator along with, um, our two others, Ryan Keeney and, uh, Wayne Share. So again, it's the mayor's recommendation and mine as well, uh, that we hire Mr. Sorin Crowell for the position of water sewer trainee.
Any questions for staff? Any questions for staff related to this item? Therefore, is there a motion to accept Sorin Crowell as the?
Water sewer operator trainee.
Trainee. Great. Okay. As the water sewer operator trainee.
I assume.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Ritz. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. All commissioners present. Okay, we now turn to agenda item number four. Still on the agenda.
Okay. Item, yeah. Agenda item number four. This is, uh, the approval of the sewer connection agreement with 500 East Main Street and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration. This is Mr. Sloan's property again at 500 East Main Street. There's one correction on page 25. It should say it is this day of November 2021. Basically on page, at the bottom of page 25, the agreements are that, uh, the town shall install sewer line uh, from the Sloan residence to the town main line located under and along Creamery Road will install a new lateral line coming from the east side of the residential structure and shall extend the line beyond the property line, uh, to the main sewer. The line, uh, will be hooked up to existing cast iron pipe. The town work will be conducted within the general area depicted in exhibit A, which is page 30, for anybody's reference. Page number six, uh, the installation saw include the hookup of the lines within the residence. Exhibit B outlines it, the work will be performed by, uh, Calco Plumbing and Backhoe Service, which the town utilizes for, um, most of its water and sewer line work. And, um, again, page 26, 27 outlines the work that will be done and, um, the work, uh, the estimate on page 32 is for $13,000. We also will, um, there's some trying to find the, the actual thing. Town will remove and replace the slate papers in the disturbed area. Uh, remove and reinstall the wire dog fence in the disturbed area, remove and replace sidewalk in the disturbed areas. Install a new sidewalk from the back doorsteps of the residence to the basement entrance of approximately 40 feet by two feet. Um, the precise area will be reviewed and agreed upon, uh, by Mr. Sloan, the town in advance of the sidewalk work. I believe Mr. Thistle has worked closely, uh, with Mr. Sloan, um, throughout this process. And, um, the, the agreement has already been signed, um, by, uh, the Sloan family. And it's just looking for, uh, board approval of the agreement. And once we receive that approval, we will, uh, move forward quickly with getting the work scheduled.
Is there a motion, uh, for approval of the sewer connection agreement with 500 East Main Street? The authorization for the mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration.
Commissioner Donald, your mic's off.
All right. Sorry. I'll do it again.
Rewind.
Okay. Yep. My apologies. Is there a motion to approve the sewer connection agreement with 500 East Main Street? And authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town for, uh, on behalf of the town, uh, as modified and the modification relates to the date change from October is listed to November of 2021. I assume, thank you, Mr. Burns. Again, is there a second for Mr. Burns's motion?
A second.
Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Burns. It has been seconded by Commissioner Sweeney. Any further discussion?
No, just to thank staff for making, making this happen. I know it was a big oops back in the days, probably happened even before Commissioner Sweeney was ever a commissioner. So, um, making things right. So that's, I'm happy to see that. Thank you.
Very good. And the other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. The motion carries five to zero. All commissioners present. We now turn to agenda item number five. And I'm looking at number five. I'm sorry. I got my page fogged here. We have staff comment.
So staff comment essentially this item is going to be postponed more than likely till December. Uh, the town provided a draft agreement to the property owner at 502 East Main Street, uh, for their review. Uh, we have not received any executed copy from the property owner. And therefore we have to pull the item for the agenda and can't present it at this time. It's our intent, uh, to provide the certain improvements within the property boundaries, boundaries of the land owners along this portion of the main line, like we're, uh, the intent with Mr. Sloan's property. Typically, we don't do interior lateral lines, uh, as those are the obligations of the property owner. However, we felt it was appropriate in this case, uh, since main lines are being, uh, relocated. We hope to have this item back in December.
Terrific. Thank you. So we now turn to agenda item number six. Approval of temporary construction deed of easement with Emmitsburg East Industrial Park Limited Liability Company and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration.
This item has been canceled as there is no need, um, for the temporary construction easement any longer. Uh, the contractor can complete all necessary work within, um, the dedicated area.
You now turn to agenda item number seven. Approval of 25 year reversible forest conservation deed. Sorry, pardon me. Let me restate. Approval of 25 year revertible forest conservation deed of easement with the daughters of charity and authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President. If I could direct the board's attention to page 42 is, um, we'll talk about that quick. So the town, as we stated in our MS four presentation, we have formed a partnership with Streamlink Education and the Daughters of Charity. Uh, the Daughters of Charity are willing to provide the town a 25 year, uh, tree planting revertible easement. So what that means, or on 16 acres, so what that means is in 25 years after the tree planting date, um, they can, uh, if they want to develop the property, they can do so. But it protects the archery plantings until, uh, for 25 years. So, um, I won't go over the agreement. Um, we're just really appreciative of the dollars of charity for giving us, um, 16 acres, uh, for tree plantings.
Okay. Are there any questions for staff related to this item?
I have a few.
Yes, sir.
Um, the large parcel, so this is 16 acres. It's like kind of in the middle. I think at one time we looked at that entire cone shaped parcel, so to speak, um, potentially being annexed into the town. Are, are we considering that now or would this 16 acre easement suffice for our intentions of meeting, um, MS four requirements? Yeah. So we had a really in-depth conversation with MBE regarding this property and our concerns about, um, annexing at this time. And since it does border, um, our wastewater treatment plant property and also flat run stream and that the plantings will, um, help alleviate issues with pollutants. They are stating we do not need to annex at this time. If it was a, a property a little further away, further from the stream, further from our town boundary, if it wasn't a budding our town boundary, then we would have to, um, Does this also play a role potentially? Um, I, I know we talked about this before on the other side of the road, um, the property adjacent to what we'll be talking about tonight and on, uh, agenda item nine, then this would, um, preclude that from becoming an enclave, so to speak. Oh, regarding, oh, correct. So yeah, so the Lindsay property. Yes. If we would have annexed this property, it would have potentially created an enclave. We, just long story short, we would have had to take over, um, Creamery Road, which is currently maintained by the county. Yes. So that was going to be a problem. So we worked hard with MDE. Good. And they were willing to. So even with this easement, then that doesn't come into play then. Correct. Okay. Cool. Correct. Yep. Oh, I just, I just wrote this down. Um, had all my questions and I just thought of this one today. Does anyone hunt that property? That you're aware of? I'm not aware of that. Okay. Mr. Lindsay would know better than me. Nearby. Okay. All right. That's, that's, that's all I had, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions? Hearing none, we now turn to a motion. Is there a motion to the approval of a 25 year revertible forest conservation deed of easement with the daughters of charity? And to authorize the mayor to sign on behalf of the town? Thank you. Is there a second for Commissioner Sweeney's motion?
I'll second it.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney, seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Did Mr. Davis weigh in?
Yeah, I.
Thank you, sir. Sorry, I didn't hear you the first time. Motion carries five to zero, all commissioners in accord. We now turn to agenda item eight as modified, and I'll clarify in a moment. So initially, we had intended to talk about setting the price for this, but at this time, we're modifying it. As well, it's, I'll turn to you, I'm on page fifty-four or sixty-four.
Correct, so the property in reference for agenda item number eight is three oh three West Lincoln Avenue, which is a property currently owned by the town. It is, the Christ Community Church rents the property and has been running the property for many years. And we have been approached to sell the property and some talks had begun from the pastor. So, and before we can move forward with this property, or for Pastor John, or for anybody else, the board needs to deem that this property no longer is needed for a public purpose. So essentially, that the town no longer needs this, this piece of property for our own use. And you'll see on pages fifty-five through sixty-two, or just some pictures of the building, the first couple of pages are, or two pages are the exterior, and then it moves to the interior of the building. At this time, staff and the mayor has no reason to believe that we have a public purpose for that building, and we could proceed with, at the next meeting, setting a sale price for it.
Okay, do you need any action by the board at this time?
Yeah, so basically from, by the, the board needs to vote, basically stating that three oh three, three oh three West Lincoln is no longer needed for a public purpose.
Very good. Okay, just curiously, for its past use, when the town came to own it, what was its function at that time?
I believe it was a
It was a Catholic.
County building, wasn't it?
It was, it was Catholic charity.
Okay, so the, we purchased it from the county?
I don't.
Or we received it from?
We purchased it nineteen ninety-six for twenty-five thousand dollars.
Okay, for what purpose?
I don't know, but that's, that was the last sell price.
By May, it was for up county.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead, please.
Up County, it was called at that time.
Catholic charities.
Catholic charities ran it, Catholics. It was our building, but Catholic, my understanding is Catholic charities built it for us, and then they occupied building. It served a wide array of uses, upstart, things like that. Is that Commissioner Ritz, is that sweet, you all recall that?
Or maybe it was, yeah, maybe it was subdivided off there, and then the building was built. I can't remember that part. I just, it was mid nineties.
I guess what I'm asking, what I was wondering is, was there any intent in the purchase of this structure to knock it down and create parking there?
If there was, I'm not aware.
Because I've not heard anything in anecdotal conversations, and therefore, I'm comfortable therefore with the staff recommend.
I haven't heard that one, no.
All right, and I wanted to, right.
My only question is, why did we buy it?
I think it was to provide, to maintain, to continue the provision of services that it made available to the community that we're otherwise all.
It had a couple of different offices for federal county or Catholic charities presented. You could get your GED, you could get your, it was a seat center, or have, was a facility like seat and center as now.
So we kind of use it as a community center in some way, shape.
Yeah. Correct. At that time, we had, they had a daycare center in there at one time, and
And that was before this was renovated.
There was a little clinic or something, and that was when it first came in. It was bought before my time, because it's bought in ninety-six, and I came on just right after that, after they had purchased it. But the, the Catholic charities actually built the building. We didn't not build it, and then, but it was on our property, and they built it for the town to have something in the north part of the county, instead of everybody having to run down the front and all that stuff. That's what it was for.
And is it also fair to say that that brought social services to the community? They were later housed here.
Yes, and then we also, and then they also had a couple, which we are housed here now under this building. When they rehab this building, some of the facilities went to this building, and then they, Catholic charities disbanded or, or discontinued to services up here, and so we rented it to Pastor John.
Okay.
Yeah, I can't find anything. I went on our I drive and looked up the, up county, and I don't see anything really that would say why.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Sweeney, Mr. Ritz, thank you, Mr. Burns. So with that in mind, is there a motion to?
Mr. President.
Sorry, yes, sir.
Well, I guess that's okay, we can do a motion to vote on it. I have more, some more questions, though.
Oh, absolutely, sure. I'm sorry, continue, please.
I guess, I, I know that Pastor John Christ Community Church indicated that they might be interested in buying the building, but I guess my question is, what if they decide not to? Do we, is there something in their current lease that we have to honor, or would we just terminate that lease?
So I'm pulling the lease up now. I believe the lease expires. I believe it's next year. I'm trying to pull it up right now. But, so I believe the intent of the mayor and staff is to recommend if Pastor John does not want to purchase the building, that we go ahead and list it with an agent and, and sell the building as a whole, because we don't have any public purpose for it. We don't owe any money on the building, and that the prop, the proceeds from that building can go to much needed areas in town for other uses.
MS four.
Yeah, well, you know, the MS four we just talked about, and some other much needed infrastructure, not related to water and sewer.
Do we have ideas what that could be? Just a potential shopping list?
Parking lot?
Parking lot. Okay, I guess my only main concern, and I know as, as landlords, I think we've, we, we make pretty good landlords. You know, I think Christ Community Church is, is a great, they do a lot for our community. Now, granted, if we do sell it, whoever else buys it, let's say they're not interested in buying it, there's nothing that can it's almost a, well, that, that, it is what it is, they might not have themselves a church.
I don't think that's the case.
You never know.
All right.
Okay.
However, I'd be willing to go the next step, you know, see what they have those discussions, setting that sell price to. Because if we don't go, you know, if it doesn't happen tonight, then we don't get to that next step, and I think I think it's an opportunity for the church to, to buy that themselves, or who knows?
If the board finds that we don't want to take this step at a future time, we can reverse our decision with another vote. So it's not like we're perpetually obligated once this.
Well, my understanding was, if we do that tonight, potentially next month, we'd be setting a sell price, and then getting that thing listed probably, right?
Correct, yes. So I just pulled his lease up, his lease is, expires in September of twenty twenty-two.
Okay.
So, I mean, you know, this isn't a fast process.
No.
But this is the first step, even if he does express interest in wanting to purchase it, until it's deemed no public purpose, there's really nothing that anybody can do.
All right. I, I don't have any more questions then.
Thank you, sir. Any other commissioner questions? None? Okay. So is there a motion to state that three zero three West Lincoln Avenue is no longer needed for a public purpose at this time?
So moved.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second for Commissioner Ritz's motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion has been made by Commissioner Ritz. It has been seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero, all commissioners voting. Okay, we now turn to agenda item number nine. Similarly, it is modified, and return to town staff.
So just like the previous agenda item, there is, as you can see on page sixty-three, in the top photograph there, the bottom portion is the, the road that leads back to the wastewater treatment plant, and then you see the solar fields. On the upper portion is the Lindsay property. There's three acres at sixteen, seven fifteen Creamery Road that is located on the wastewater treatment plant property. However, there is no public, we don't use it for anything except to mow it, and Mr. Lindsay has expressed interest in that piece of property. So we would like, again, just with the previous item, for the board to deem that there's no public purpose for that property, so that we can then proceed with working with Nick, Mr. Lindsay on a, a set in a sale price.
Okay, any questions for staff?
I have a few.
Mr. Ritz.
Okay. That picture on page sixty-three, the top part, where it shows that three acre triangle shape right before, above the solar fields, there's like a sign right there in the middle. I can't quite read it, but behind that sign, when you look at the aerial photos on the GIS site, which is awesome, I love that site, by the way, so thanks for tipping that off. And I don't know the proper term. I know Mr. Lindsay's speaking tonight, and he'll probably address that. I, I mean, I love horses, but I don't know equestrian terms too well, but it's, it's like a an area where horses would run around. It's not a grassy area, and, and that, that, that has been there for years. At least back to nineteen eighty-eight, so I'm assuming that portion, the Lindsay family took care of that, they, they had the, their horses there. So the, the areas that the town maintains, mows, are they on the either side of that, the, the big grassy areas?
Yes.
Well, it's, okay.
So that box is basically, it says acres, three acres, and then
I don't know why I can't.
I think that says.
Square foot, square footage.
That's the square footage.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, so staff mows that, the areas outside of that.
Okay.
And mows some of it, yes.
Okay, um, let's see. Is that? And tonight, we're just talking about same thing, we're deeming it whether or not we need it for public purpose.
Correct.
But we really haven't used it for
But still has to be done because it's still town property.
Thirty-some years.
Right. I, I understand there may have been a previous agreement. I don't know, we've never been able to locate one with Mr. Lindsay. However, it is still, still town property, so it still needs to be deemed that there's no public purpose for that, those three acres.
Now, unless there's an error on the GIS site similar to the pumping station, would that need to be subdivided off then?
Yes, so the first step would actually be annexation. And then Mr. Lindsay has expressed interest in possible annexation, and then it would need to be subdivided, an addition plat done to add this property to that.
Okay, here's a hypothetical. Let's say Mr. Lindsay decides not to annex into town, he's property above it. Could he theoretically, if he were to purchase this property?
No.
Could he have, so he can't own two pieces, like one piece be in town limits, and then the other piece can't be?
I, I haven't checked the subdivision regulations for this particular property. I don't think it would meet the ordinance. Variances would have to be applied for, however, however, it was our, our understanding that he would be annexing.
All right, this one's a little trickier for me tonight, that's why I have these questions, so I don't know if anyone else has any questions, I don't want to be holding up this anymore, but sort of bigger question mark over this one for me. I'll, I'll yield it over. I don't know if anyone else has any questions.
Any other commissioner questions? No? Okay, we now turn to public comment. Mr. Lindsay, we invite you forward. If you could please identify yourself, share your address, and you have the floor as per the timer allows. And good evening.
Good evening. I'm Richard Lindsay, one six seven three seven Creamery Road. Just to clarify a little bit on some of this. This was, I was approached by the town in, we said nineteen eighty-six about this, this piece of property. Duke Martin was town manager at the time, and mentioned to me, and I'm not, I'm sure his words were, there was a mistake, and they didn't, they didn't put it, this should have been part of the treatment plan, however, it wasn't. So he asked me if we would be interested in utilizing it for agriculture purposes, and we said, sure. So that's when, that's how all this came about. The three, the P part that you mentioned, Commissioner Ritz, under the sign is, that is a riding ring that we constructed.
Okay.
There's kind of like three quadrants, if you will, the widest part out front. I know all that, all of it have been, and we've actually made hay a couple, over the years. The center portion there is the, where it starts in there, and is our riding area, and then the back corner, back piece that goes into just about nothing is where we pasture, it's part of our pasture. So we've been there for, well, it's been over thirty-six years. So we are interested, I, I didn't just sidetrack a little bit on this annexation issue. I was first contacted about the annexation issue that Sisters of Charity was, was gonna annex in. Then they weren't, then they were, but now understand they're not, so that means that in reality, I, if the Sisters of Charity aren't annexed in, there would really be no, no reason for Lindsay family to annex in. Just, that's just kind of a side note there. I just want to close by saying that, you know, we've had, we've had a great relationship with the town over the years. Outside of our little disagreements on the infamous chicken lagoon issue, we've had a great relationship, and I so, I certainly hope that comes into play in this. And I do want to say that the fact that when you look at the appraisal, it is, it is listed as industrial ground, obviously, because it's owned by the municipality and, and part of a treatment plant. However, it has been utilized for thirty-six years as agricultural ground. And that's a significant difference when you, certainly when it comes to price. So I just ask that you would take all of that in consideration, and I certainly thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate you coming in. Okay, so it comes to the board at this time to vote regarding identifying that as no longer needed for public purpose. And as a reminder, we are not setting the sale price tonight as per staff request. So is there a motion to find, to identify the three acres at one six seven one five Creamery Road wastewater treatment plant property as no longer needed for public purpose? Thank you. Motion's been made by Commissioner Sweeney. Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion's been seconded by Commissioner Burns. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Ritz.
So are we setting the price for this next month?
Yes.
Does it have to be set next month?
It can't be, yeah.
Why do we have to do it next month? Well, for example, why can't we postpone that until January or February?
Well, I would think Mr. Lindsay wants to move forward.
I still have questions on this annexation part, though.
Well, I think we're talking about the sale of that property specifically for Mr. Lindsay, outside of the annexation, correct?
I think what we heard tonight is annexation is not in the discussion.
No, but if he were to purchase that property, how does that affect his existing house that is not in town property?
Well, this isn't in town property either, is it?
This is.
This one is, that's right, with the, with the annexation.
That's why it's kind of murky here.
Right.
So in the meantime, I think we'll have a conversation with Mr. Lindsay and have more answers on the annexation next month.
Right. So I don't have to set the sale price for December. I just thought Mr. Lindsay wanted to move forward with it. If he's not in a rush, then we'll certainly get through those other problems and set it in January or February when everybody's comfortable. But we can't do any of this until it's deemed no public purpose.
Without having Mr. Lindsay come back to the podium, are you in a rush? Yes or no? Okay, there we go. Okay.
So we don't know that we're going to see the Lindsay spaceport anytime soon. Okay, so.
No, we're looking forward to working with Mr. Lindsay on this and we're kind of in agreement on the appraisal, so.
And I guess just, just for clarification regarding this and agenda item eight, when we do set a sale price, because we are a municipality. For transparency purposes, sorry, I'm not close to my mic there. We have to list it like on a regular, a regular listing. It's, or can we, do we do something like, you know, sell to?
It's my, I'm working with Ms. Powell on that one.
Okay.
It is the, the regulations with sell, with, with municipality selling property. It is kind of tricky, so I want to make sure we do the appropriate steps. I don't have all your answers for you right now. I could clarify, there were some talk going back and forth. It does not have to be done in closed session. But the Court of Appeals says it has to be done. The sale price has to be set in open session.
Okay.
So I think it was the Court of Appeals. So we will do that in open session, but the rest of it, I want to make sure with her. Because, you know, Mr. Lindsay, we already have a buyer for the property. Do we have to actually list the property? I don't believe so, but I will clarify that.
Okay, thanks. I didn't know if you had to go on Zillow and all those and, you know, with pictures and.
And the same goes for true if Pastor John wants to make an offer on the, on the property, does that have to be listed then? So I'm working through those to make sure that we do it correctly.
All right. Well, I feel that I'm satisfied, for mostly regarding the annexation part. So I know you're going to be discussing that with, with, with the Lindsay, so.
Yeah, so there's really two options, if I can just explain.
Sure.
The first option is to subdivide the property into that three acre parcel, which I don't know if that's possible.
Okay.
Regarding with our regulations, I need an engineer to tell me that. And second option is for Mr. Lindsay to annex, and then we do that addition onto his property. We can't do that addition unless he's annexed.
Okay.
So I know he has a good relationship with Mr. Gauss. So I need someone to tell me that, you know, that it works.
Here's a crazy question for you. I'm sorry to be taking so long here, but we have, we have new fees regarding annexation and all that. It falls into the planning. It was like chapter seventeen of our code. I know we just recently passed something. So if this comes to be that the Lindsay's would have to annex their current property. Is that on them to pay those fees or is that because something the town initiated?
So to speak. Right. So since we initiated the annexation, Mr. Lindsay would be exempt from the fees.
Okay, that's good.
One thousand dollar fees.
Yeah, I remember it was pretty high. Okay.
Now, there's still going to be attorney fees. And possible engineer fees if we do the addition, which will not be covered under the waiving of the fees. Just the one thousand dollar annexation fee.
All right.
Just one last question then.
Yes, sir, Mr. Burns.
In regards to if we're declaring it tonight that it's no longer needed for public purpose. Would that move it outside of town property?
No.
So no matter what happens, we'd never move outside town property unless we deannexed it?
That's correct. You can't do that. So it's always going to be in our, in our boundary.
Perfect. Okay. Any further questions for staff related to this item? Any further discussion items?
No.
Hearing none, therefore, I'll call the vote. Is there a motion to identify the three acres at one six seven one five Creamery Road wastewater treatment plant property? Deciding it is no longer needed for public purpose. So I'm reiterating the item. Pardon me, we're in discussion. Motion's been made. My apologies. I'm calling the vote now. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That was a aye. Okay, sorry. Motion carries five to zero. All commissioners voting in favor of the item. Thank you. Turn to staff now for our September, sorry, our December seventh. Agenda.
Okay. I'm trying to look one, the language for one item real quick, if you just bear with me. All right, that's not it. Okay, I'll get started. I have many items. So I have one administrative business item, free holiday metered parking for consideration. I have three consent agenda items. First one, accept resignation of Ronald Lynn from the Board of Appeals effective October twelfth, twenty twenty one for consideration. Number two, appointment of Levi Essis as a regular member of the Board of Appeals with a term of December seventh, twenty twenty one. To February seventeenth of twenty twenty three. I have. Have an appointment. We do not have a name of yet, but I would like to have this on the consent agenda. Appointment of a member as an all, appointment of an alternate to the Board of Appeals. With a term of December seventh, twenty twenty one to January eleventh, twenty twenty four. As soon as we get a name, we will notify everybody. Agenda item number one will be the audit presentation by Michelle Mills CPA with D. Leon and Stang. Number two is the approval of a stormwater management deed of easement with Village Liquors and Plaza Inn. And authorized mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration. Number three, approval of the town of Emmitsburg addition plat. For two Creamery Road for consideration. Number four, approval of a confirmatory road dedication deed. For the pump station project located at two Creamery Road. And authorized mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration. Number five, approval of bid to complete a water rate, sewer rate and tap fee study for consideration. I need to look up the language for the, I need to, agenda item number six. Will be to set the sale price for three oh three. West Lincoln. Yeah, it's for consider, approval of the mayor. Okay, that, so that's the first one. Set the sale price for three oh three West Lincoln Avenue for consideration. And number seven will be. Approval of the mayor entering into a real estate listing agreement. For the purpose of selling three oh three West Lincoln Avenue. And then I have, I have two tentative items. T tentative will be the approval of the sewer connection agreement. With five oh two East Main Street and authorized mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration. And then the other tentative will be the approval of a stormwater management. Deed of easement for the pump station project located at two Creamery Road. And authorized mayor to sign on behalf of the town for consideration. And that's it.
So the deed of easement for item nine. We have, I had thought we had full access to that property from Creamery Road. Is that inaccurate?
I'm sorry.
Was it a different angle of easement or?
Is this for the addition?
Waterment for the D, for the pump station.
Okay, so the county requires that we do a deed of easement for the stormwater management. So that area always is stormwater management purpose. So the board has to approve that.
Understood. Okay, very good. Would you like a vote from the board to accept the agenda as presented?
I have a question.
I'm sorry.
So Ms. Blas appears that you might have struck out the. Agenda items number six and seven pertain to three oh three West Lincoln. So was there an eight and nine that you crossed out regarding? The property on. Creamery Road.
Well, I think based on the discussions that they have with the annexation and the, not the rush to do it.
Okay.
I think to be better prepared, we will hold off till January.
All right.
And I think that long enough as it is.
So I was going to add something, but it looks like we have a pretty full plate. So I know Commissioner O'Donnell referenced this tonight. Would I be agreeable to January for potential administrative item? Probably a discussion regarding that second meter. I think that probably would be better suited for.
Yeah, I have.
January.
Meetings. I've reached out to our accounting department for logistics on the accounting side. And I've reached out to Dan Fissell and Jimmy Click to get their input. I've been told there's pros and cons.
I'm sure.
So we need to have, we have not been able to have a meeting yet with everything else that's been going on. So I think with holidays coming up and staff time being off, January would be prepared in January.
Okay, so just a heads up, I might be coming, coming with that as a.
Sure.
Agenda item for January then.
If it wasn't you, it would have been me.
Oh, there you go. And just, I don't want to drag us on anymore, but I know Commissioner Davis actually mentioned this, I believe. Goodness, probably two years ago. Every December, we vote on the free holiday parking. Would it be possible maybe to enact a policy? Where it would always be. You know, the Monday, X amount of days before Christmas until the Monday after the. January first. And then any money collected would be allocated as such to the, let's say, the Lions Club, the Friends of the Library and. The Food Bank, I think's the third one. So I only know, it only takes a couple of minutes to vote on it, but it would just maybe save us.
The days change just slightly. Typically, we've been doing the. We've been having it run for two, three. It looks like typically it runs for a little over three weeks. I, we've been thinking the Friday after the tree lighting, which this year will be December tenth. And then. This year would be to January third after the New Year's holiday.
Yeah.
It just, it just changes by a couple of dates. I don't.
It's like the first Friday, the first Friday of December through, until the.
Well, this one's actually the second Friday because it's the Friday after, because the first Friday here, it's a whole month.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Like you said, it only takes a matter of minutes, but it doesn't really matter to staff.
Maybe, maybe next month we. We vote on this and then we have a whole year to get this policy in place, figure something out. I don't know, just save us a couple of minutes. And then we just have it on the books and if we ever change anything, and even the allocation too. You know, I think it's been the same three entities.
I'm, I love the idea, but the only thing I'm concerned about is the allocation piece.
Okay.
One organization would come forward and provide a legitimate immediate need.
Okay.
It would give us, give any board that latitude, let's shift a little bit.
Okay, okay.
But and that also, I think, opens it up so it's not. Locked. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I'm all on board with the date idea, like the, you know, those dates shall be, you know, designated, that those fees shall be designated for, you know, charitable causes within the town. But. The latitude thing I love. I think we need to have. Some flexibility there. Now, if there's a scandal at the Friends.
We have all twenty twenty two to figure something out, I guess. Okay, so I'm, I'm, I'm done. Thanks.
All right. Do we need a motion to accept the agendas as presented?
Yes, please.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the agendas as presented?
So moved.
Is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion as of the agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion carries five to zero. Okay, one modest administrative item. There is a distinct possibility that there will be. A closed session. Date potentially set as per request of Commissioner Davis for a closed session. It would be, it will be forthcoming. I want to speak with Commissioner Davis when he's. Got the luxury of more time and isn't back and is back in town. And also I will talk to staff. So everybody's on the same page. So the, the hope was we were, we were not going to do it tonight because of the late hour. We anticipated a late ending and sure enough, here we are. And that's after trimming a few items out. So there will be a request. For attendance at a closed session at some future date and you'll be, you know, properly notified in due time.
Okay.
Okay. All right. So is there a motion to close the meeting?
Ten minutes.
Any second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion, sorry. Motion carries five to nothing. This closes the November first, twenty twenty one town meeting. The time is nine fifty seven PM.